We've got to go, I can maybe see that. You know, if you're not on call, you know, if you're not in town, if you don't live in town, you live out of town. You know, ten miles, five miles from from here, you know, those vehicles need to actually be going home? You know, you have the fuel there, that the city's, you know, maintenance.
You're 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 asking the finance.
Yeah, it's just a question.
That's really up to the department heads and the personal decisions that they make, and that has to be approved by the city. And I really don't have any say on that. I know that some people have the ability to take their vehicles home. But, you know, I choose my battles, and that's not one of the battles I want to choose.
I understand where you're coming, but it's a question I got to ask.
Sure, no, it's rightfully so, but I don't have any support yet.
Those are my concerns.
I only saw a couple of things, and maybe you could just clear them up for me. So, under Finance and Admin, we have an audit and consultation. The budget was eight thousand nine hundred and twenty. And then when it shows me my my year-to-date balance, we're looking at thirty thousand.
Good question.
What what happened there? And the same same thing with attorney fees, it was budgeted at five, and then we're looking at fifteen.
Another great question. Uh, the first one, that that month, that cost is for freezing associates to do our annual budget. That is split between the Finance Administration and the three enterprise funds, as well as maybe one other fund actually pays into that as well. That hasn't been split out yet. Whenever we get that bill, we pay it from here, and then as a year-end adjustment, we adjust that into those other funds.
Okay.
So, that's a great question, good catch. We just haven't made that done, we haven't done that yet. Same with, uh, there's also another one in Finance Administration that that's kind of the same thing. I think it's under insurance, you know.
Yeah, your workman comp.
Yeah, yeah, workman comp, as as a couple of other ones. That those are all end-of-year journal entries that have to be made and adjusted into those different funds and split up. The previous finance managers set it up to just go under Finance Administration, and then they, and that's how you did it. And I haven't changed that, so it could be good.
Can you make that look better next year?
I don't want to ask the same question.
Yeah, you're probably, yeah.
Anyway, but no, that was a good catch.
So are the allocations done at the end of the year for those?
When we start going through our audit, the auditors actually would make those adjustments based off the year-end. We don't close out either year until after we come through our audit. Once the audit is completed and and we go back as of December thirty first and put all the expenditures and revenues that belonged in two thousand twenty four, once we've got all those books corrected, then we close out our books and we move on. But we don't do any of those, but we do those as we're going through the audit. And they make those adjustments for us in in the audit.
So my my question on that is, uh, how much is our audit annual?
Uh, thirty-six thousand.
So on general fund, we have thirty thousand, and then in the water, we have twelve-four, and then in sewer, we have nine thousand. So is it, that's totaling up?
That's me making those in in the budget, because we're gonna have to do that year-end adjustment in twenty twenty-five. I'm already accounting for it in the budget. Does that make sense?
No.
Because the math doesn't add up.
Well, not enough, fifty-one thousand that we're, that we have in our budget, so is our audit fifty-one thousand?
It should be thirty-six.
And then general fund, it's thirty. Is that right?
Are we looking at the proposed budget or are you looking at expenses, which is?
No, that's wrong. Thirty was just the last year.
It should be about twelve thousand dollars in the in the general fund, or excuse me. Thirty-six thousand divided by four should be about what each of the the three enterprise funds and the general fund should be paying for the audit.
Yep, that confusion on me was looking at, we were talking about looking at the actual, but looking at the twenty-five budget. In general fund, we have eighteen-one, sewer or water twelve-four, sewer nine, and that comes up to the thirty-nine-five.
That's, that's probably right. Depending on how much work, depending on how much work they have to do, I just ballpark it at thirty-six, but that's what we had last year. But, you know, previous years, it was more than that, because they had to do more work on it, so. So it's it's in that thirty range.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't know if you guys, I mean, obviously, you've seen it, but if you want me to go through the fund, the different expenses, expenditures that will be approved in it or not, you can read as well as I can. I don't know if you want me to go through that.
I'm not for looking at numbers before I was.
Welcome to my life.
Oh, no, I can do it.
Like I did say, and this will be the last point, then I'll let, we can move on to to more important things, but. The the truck and the and the and the loader I've got in the two thousand twenty-five budget. If we approve that budget, then that money's gonna be not done in twenty twenty-four, like I said, we could do. But if we go American, you're approving those purchases if you approve the budget, so be careful with that. So you'll have to, the truck, you make that decision. Makes sense? Also.
Just to make sure, again, so you're saying that you've budgeted that eighty-four for two vehicles for the end of twenty twenty-five budget? So we don't need to necessarily go ahead and approve five vehicles now?
Well, it's like, it's gonna come out either this year or out next year. That's that's what I'm saying.
So if we approve the budget, we're we're approving the purchase of them in the twenty twenty-five budget?
Unless I take it out before I finally.
Or we're gonna approve it now and have it come out of the capital improvement?
And then when you say.
Do we need to specify?
No, 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 we've still got till the next meeting, this is our first reading. I'm I'm just letting you guys know that it's, you've got two options. Both of them are from the capital improvement, and it's not gonna matter, because that money's gonna roll over. But I wasn't sure we were gonna be able to get this done by the end of twenty twenty-four. You know, they, you know, we don't buy vehicles fast. So.
If you say yes, they'll go.
So the money's there, whether it's this year or next next year's budget, the money is there.
Yes. Um, also, in the theater fund, I know that they're gonna be approaching you for about a five thousand dollar request for the projectionist training. I didn't have that in my budget. So if we decide to do that, then we 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 need to add that to the budget.
My understanding, excuse me, my understanding with that, sending the protectionist in for the training, to learn how to clean, maintain, you know, the projector and everything, the theater's willing to pay for that, right? Theater, so there'd be no cost to the city on that?
Well, essentially, uh, there's a surplus in the in the grant that will cover that. But then we may also approach the grant friends to take that half of it.
Well.
Anyway.
Yeah.
What what he's really after is getting certified, so that they will send parts to it. They won't send parts to him now, because he's not a certified person to work on on the projector.
And then once he becomes certified, he can also be, you know, train somebody here to do it if he's not around.
Well, and and it sheds a little bit more bright light on this situation is the fact that if if Bob Nelson and I came to agreement two years ago, that if the grant runs into the red, that the friends of the grant will make up that difference, so that we're not having to carry a loss in our general funds or the theater. So it's really a viewpoint, but it's, you know, I I knew that they were gonna bring it, and I and I just wanted to, you know, I had it. I don't have any budget.
Should be no expense to the city, though?
No, one way or the other. So they're gonna make us whole if we have, we're basically front of the money, but we get it back in the, or in the next year.
A question coming down this way?
No.
I mean, comments, I guess?
Nobody get paid a deal for it?
I got I got a couple that I'll speak to. So for me, big thing that sticks out is just looking, of course, all overall budget increasing, so overall spending increasing. When I look at that, I I do, I see our, all of our public safety departments, water and sewer increasing, but then I see pretty much every other department, so Finance Administration, library, museum, uh, pretty much every other department is is taking cuts. Public Works, Public Works is taking a cut. And it's, you know, it looks really, I guess, really heavy on some areas, but not others. And I I'm I'm sure that it was kind of combbed through. But, you know, I I say on the public works side, that's, you know, I think that's a big one that we probably always give, you know, calls on or concerns on. You know, I think we probably hear more concerns about streets and, and, you know, streets and sidewalks and potfalls and things like that, and it's like, you know, we're kind of going the opposite direction as far as where we're putting our funding. You know, I think where we hear more of the problems is probably where we should see more of the funding being allocated. So that's, you know, that's something that that totally sticks out. You know, I I know, for me, it was kind of looking at, you know, what 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 can we do there? I'm I'm not sure. On the PD side, PD side, and looking at that, we've we've increased, if if this is approved, we would have increased Police Department spending by over a half million over the last three years. So from last year, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, this year, we would be at a little over a million, so about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase, eighteen percent increase, if you look at it that way. I think we know that it's, we're looking at a lot of higher staffing on on police officers and patrol. The other big part inside of the Police Department is enforcing local, local law, which is our ordinances. So for me, my, what what I think about is, you know, with seeing additional money allocated in the Police Department, you know, should we also then see all of the, a lot of those issues with code enforcement, with our local local law being addressed? Or is that gonna fix this? No, that's that's one of the things that I look at. When I look at code enforcement, I don't think there is any line item for for dogs. But for sure, when we look at code enforcement, we're, there's twenty-five hundred dollars allocated there, and, you know, like like I've said before, I get more calls about code enforcement type of things, our local ordinances and dogs, than I ever have about, you know, murderers or or robberies or, you know, anything like that.
I prefer it that way. I'd rather deal with dogs and murders.
Right, but also, I mean, when we had, we probably have the same amount of murders now than when we have three officers patrolling. So, you know, if if we aren't really facing this high-level crime, we have local law that that needs to be addressed. So that's that's something that totally sticks out at me. I know that we received a grant, a little over three hundred thousand. So that's gonna go towards some staffing and then some purchases of new vehicles, so that's reflected in there. But yeah, I think a comment on that is, yeah, I think we really need to put the money where the the people say the problem is, and that's in addressing all those issues that fall under our local local municipal law.
Well, and and I agree with you. If you look at the Police Department, and you're right, that that there's the the proposed budget of a million thirty-four, three seventy-five, and you look right underneath there, it says seven twenty-eight, four thirty-six. What that is, is that's that JAG grant that is gonna pay for some salaries, some equipment, and et cetera, for two of our officers. That, so the net, I wanted, I didn't want to excuse the numbers, make it look like we've got a million dollars in this. In reality, it's seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which is, again, an increase, but, you know, it's it's not as significant as it really kind of looks, because of the fact they went out and got this three hundred and five thousand dollar JAG. But, and to your point, I'm I'm going off historical data, Dwayne, of what we have expensed in these line items and trying to forecast what's going to happen. If if we start doing more code enforcement, we start doing more dog hit, you know, those type of things, that you'll you'll see that in averages in the budget, in in those line items, and then you can you can you can make those changes. But, you know, the averages are twenty-five hundred dollars for the last four years, you know. So you kind of, you're like, until we know that there's gonna be a definitive change in that behavior, I I couldn't think of any reason to make that, to put that in this. Does that make sense?
Well, I think, I think what I see is that we have, there's there's no excuse for not getting these things handled, because we budgeted for it. We we have the money in the department to handle these things, so if they're not getting handled, that's a situation. We can't sit here and go, we don't have the money. The money's here, we we have it, I mean, and this, I'm not trying to pick on our officers by any means, but we have that one line, and we talked about this last time. We budget for investigations, and then it shows we don't use it. So are we not doing investigations? Are we not, I mean, there's been a lot of things that happened, that are, what's our follow-through? What's our, I I've heard of dogs being picked up, you know, that's one of the things we hear about, and then being released back to people without them paying their fines and fees. But our investigation. Then why are we giving the dog back?
Because we can't hold them, we can only hold eight dogs. Have you been in our pound for many, putting up after eight dogs?
Then they might just stop playing this bleeding heart thing with dogs, and I'm gonna get into trouble for this. If you, if your dog's in jail and you can't afford to get it out, your dog is destroyed, I'm sorry.
It does not get destroyed, we're in a shelter.
It should be.
Well, then we should ship them to level.
They go, they go to Denver.
So we make a bigger problem for another community.
They go to Denver.
That's not our community, that's not our tax dollars paying that, our tax dollars pay here, and we should be dealing with our problems here.
But.
And I'm sorry, if we do pick up a lot of dogs, if you're releasing them because you ain't got space, then we just start doing something.
A lot of dogs go to, go to rescue. But as far as investigations go, the line item for investigations takes care of not investigations, okay? We do that. But it takes care of if somebody has to go for a same kit up at the hospital, that pays for that. That was over eight hundred dollars, correct? Okay? If we need evidence collection kits, what, what's the same kit?
To date, we're at three hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Yeah, we just had one come in.
Yeah, this is as of September, so if anything, this, again, I've had any, I had to start working on the budget, and obviously, you know, I had, at some point or another.
So, yeah, we just had one come in, and it was over eight hundred dollars.
In fact, our budget went all the way down to fifteen hundred on the proposed budget here. It went all the way down to fifteen hundred on it, and you're telling me eight hundred is one case?
Is one, is one same kit, which would be a rape kit?
I understand what it is, I'm just.
Yeah, I was, I meant to say that I spoke to Carol, and and what we think is criminal investigations really isn't criminal investigation. There there are things such as this, so.
Supplies and stuff like that for criminal investigation.
I don't know why it was ever labeled by that, it wasn't me, it's just the what's been in there, and that's, and I did raise a thousand dollars as as Dwayne had requested, to twenty-five hundred from the fifteen hundred before. So I I I took that under consideration.
Major investigation, now CBI comes in the.
A lot of times, they help, they help.
They they foot the bill, right, for them?
Not a, not a, for everything, okay? But they do, they do assist us, and they come in to assist. So we don't hand something over and just walk away from it.
The dog issue is one that comes up a lot with citizens, it comes up with me personally a lot. I mean, it's, it's affecting everyone in the community. It's ridiculous, and I'm pulling them off the side of the, I'm pulling them off the middle of the road, because they've been hit. What is it that we're not equipping? What is it that we need to do to assist, to make this get under control? I mean, I don't know if you have the answer, but you're saying you can only hold eight dogs, and we have capacity pretty much all the time?
No, but we're, right now, we've got five or four?
Last few weeks, we've been running four to six dogs.
But we've been running full the last, last few weeks.
One of the things that we just saw in the City Manager Report is that we've collected about four hundred dollars this year on on dog fees.
How much are those fifty dollars at least? I haven't looked at them in a while.
They are fifty if they come to get them out, or they can get a ticket. So if they get a ticket for a loose dog, and they don't pay at the City Hall, if they get a ticket for a loose dog, then it goes to court.
And then we'd be rolling up in the court, cost in that budget item. Can you explain that, because I'm not sure I understand, they can, they can.
So if they have a ticket for a loose dog?
So they sort of take an argument in court, basically.
They can.
Okay, and that's like the legal thing, where we have to do that, we have to give them an option to.
They have the right to do it, because I can't, I can't hold their dogs for ransom.
I swear other towns do that, but I'm not.
I I like your, your, your term there, but I'm, I'm lost, because you know.
But the majority of the people that'll come get their dogs will come get their dogs, because they're part of the family, and they pay.
I have my dog in Los Angeles taken, because she got off her chain, and I wasn't allowed to get her back until I had, before I paid that, not, until I approved she had her shots, and until I approved that she had her license. If I couldn't prove those three things, she stayed in the pound. I don't understand why we're losing all this revenue by letting them out. Like he said, four hundred bucks, that's the four dogs you got sitting over there right now.
And we, and and she, and we keep talking about it when City Hall's open. So I feel like that, now that you drop City Hall's hours down, they're only here four days a week, then maybe we need to figure out a different way to collect those revenues.
And twenty twenty-four, you don't pay it online. Put it on, put it on, I mean, we should be able to take a payment online. Boom, and we don't have to have somebody sitting in the office, you can pay your fine or fee. Or it's three days, if you come in and your dog sits there, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday morning, somebody's in this office, it was seven-thirty? Seven? Boom, get your dog out there, and otherwise, we need to stop giving them back. We we need to fund our our city and not stop bleeding, and when we're, we're saying, hey, you did this wrong, and our code says you can't do it, but we're not gonna find you, we're not gonna feed, just, you know, go ahead. You're probably picking up the same dogs over and over again, right?
Not very much.
Well, I don't know, I see the same ones, though. We we all tend to know who they are, we're like, oh, that's just Rocky, he's going to Sonic's, but.
If you pick up a dog, result of, because of the result of the attack to a.
We all know Rocky.
What happens to the dog, you probably hold them for ten days, whatever quarantine.
If we, if if it's a dog bite, we hold them for ten days. And then they get recovered, after, they go to the vet, get their shots, and prove that they have their shots. But don't they have to pay for that quarantine thing? We're supposed to pay with what cost? Isn't there quarantine? There should be, but it goes through the courts.
Well, but we also have that court, that number we got out of our report, our courts pulling in is very low. So if you're telling me we're doing four to six dogs a week, I'm looking at numbers going, that's.
I think our court costs went up significantly.
Two, three hundred bucks a week, then we should be getting just on first expense dollars.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in, that's something that we could definitely look at, that's totally administrative. So our our law's there, our law's in place. So that's totally administrative, whether or not they can collect fees, that's something the administration needs to be able to figure out, so they can collect those fees. I wanna just kind of pull us back to any feedback or questions that are, that are relevant to the the budget for whatever that line item is.
We'll pick on Kyle next time.
You got one more shot at me. I'm gonna go back in my hole for a year.
Oh, we'll call on you sometime.
Last call, anyone? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing portion. So old business. Old business, we have the approval of sewer rate increase. So on this one, the way that this would be, it would be making a selection on an option. The next steps from that would be drafting up an ordinance for the revenue bond. And then it would, you know, we'd be able to build it around that. The ordinance should include information from the the conditions of the loan, and anything else after that. If, it'll have the terminology in there about, you know, that this means specific to this project, and, you know, that this forty dollars that would be to service the loan would would end with the the payoff, final payoff of the loan. So what we would be looking at now is a selection on on what option, and kind of looking over here, so, you know, we did hold the the sewer rate increase town hall to share more information about the the financial implications, and looking at what some of the options could be. That did have to be rescheduled from one of the snow days, we were able to hold that on Monday, November eighteenth. We had a town hall at noon, and we had another one at six P M. And from that, we were able to kind of just do a interactive activity there with the attendees, and having them, you know, help us visualize what options people wanted. So when we looked at those Schedule B, so that option would be an increase of approximately eight dollars per year over the next five years, that one kind of rose to the top. And I think just, you know, hearing from people, it was really looking at what could be the lowest, the lowest real impact to their to their household budget. And then we have some different options there that would generate different reserves at at different rates. That's kind of where we are there, passive over, if anyone wants to come in on this, or be looking forward to the motion on one of those options.
On Schedule B here, it's showing the the eight dollars for five years now. Through twenty-nine, then we would have all the money we need, I thought we had to have the money before, or January twenty-ninth.
Yeah, so we would, our payments would kick in six months after project completion. Right now, they have projects set to be completed December of twenty twenty-eight. So that would put it roughly around June to July for that first payment of about three hundred and, three hundred and forty thousand. So that would be due there. With all three of these options, there would be a conservative durable reserve already built up after that, five years. If we have, we have that in our packet, and there's some in the back, but just to kind of look at them. The Schedule A, at the, I guess if we looked at January of twenty twenty-nine, when that final increase would go into effect, with Schedule A, we would have about three point, two point three million ready for for that project. With Schedule B, that same January of twenty-nine, it would be one point five million. And then with Schedule C, January of twenty-nine, it'd be one point two million. So with each one of the options, there's reserve built up, and we would be ready to start servicing that loan.
I I was going to, I was just kind of waiting to see if there were any other questions about.
I just like to say, looking at this with the public input, public wants me.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the sewer rate increase ordinance using Schedule B.
I second it.
B as in void, thank you.
B as in void.
Any, kind of toss it back over, any, any final comments that we wrote?
All I remember is that we have to put that ordinance under, like you said, you know, that it has to end as soon as the loan is completed, so.
The forty dollar?
The forty dollar increase has to end as soon as the loan is completed.
Yeah, that'll be part of the ordinance.
And we're gonna bring anything in about interest? I don't know.
That'll all come in the ordinance, so we can read that and leave and make changes as we see fit at that point, right?
What are, what are you speaking to on the interest?
Remember, remember when we did the discussion at six about investing the money that we do collect for, until we start paying it in twenty twenty-eight? Remember, remember, uh, when we did the discussion at six, uh, about investing the amount here that we do collect for, until we start paying it in twenty twenty eight? You know, because the project won't be complete till twenty twenty eight, so that, that gives us three and a half years, probably almost four years. Of money sitting somewheres, waiting to be spent on the amount we have to pay. So as the money sits there, you know, the interest that that occurs lowers the amount of payment or something, you know, I don't know. Like I said, you know, can we put in a C D or put it in something that's gonna gain us more than, well, the, the loan is at two point two percent? Two point two percent, and if we, if we invest that money at four point nine or five percent, if, if we can, I don't know, there might be some stipulation on money that we're holding. That belongs to the public on investment. I don't know.
You can't take a corporate, go ahead.
Yeah, but, but, uh, C D is a guarantee.
Well, I'm being honest, Larry, there are restrictions on what the city can invest in.
Yeah, we can put it in a C D, but up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's insured, but again, yeah, public funds.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I still got some more work to do on.
Colorado trust might be an option.
Something, you know, because, uh, it would help, it would help every citizen up here if we find something that way, something that helps us.
I, I, I've got, I've got some stuff already started, uh, planning it out for you guys, but it's not, I, I, I've finalized it. It's gonna have to have your approval anyway, but I, I've got some plans to try to invest that and still stay within the parameters of the USDA. And try to just maximize as much as we can. And some of that, that interest is probably gonna end up having to supplement our general fund down the road. Now, I talked to the auditors, auditors about that and they, they, they said that, that is legal.
But all interest made from this forty dollars should be applied towards the loan only, right?
Yes, it has to be.
Not the, not the interest.
Not pulled into any other funds.
Not, not the interest, any money that we invest on the interest, the interest can be moved from fund to fund.
But what I'm saying is if we do it this morning for the sewers, so any interest, I, can we stipulate any interest made?
That's up to you guys, but.
To pay the, pay this off.
I, I, I wouldn't recommend that, but you, if you, as a council, just decide to do that, you can. And I, I don't wanna have that conversation right now.
Yeah, he's like, but no!
No, I, you, you all just need to really book the, 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 the state of the general fund.
One of the things I would, I would speak to on that is just again, look at the, the rate on this loan over forty years. Versus any interest that could be made from that, and then, yeah, thinking about the other things that are gonna come up. We're, we're as close to zero, uh, zero percent as, as we're probably gonna see for a while with that two point two and five percent.
Because my concern is if you start pulling money out from that interest to pay other funds, then, I mean, where's our budget? We should have a budget, we shouldn't have to do that.
I've got a hundred thousand dollars in the, in the budget next year for the money that I'm gonna invest in Colorado trust. I mean, that's in the budget. But un, until we get the general fund to where it's in the black, which if we hold to our budget, we will, we'll, we'll break even next year. But for the last two years, we haven't done that.
When does our loan start?
Six months after construction.
So the loan starts then?
But the moment we start pulling.
Oh, yeah, but, yeah, but as soon as we get the, we're, we're in the process of helping Colorado bank, uh, co-bank right now to get our interim financing in place.
Yeah, because the, the interest on, on the amount of money that we're getting is about, at two point two percent is about four hundred and forty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, right?
So, but Kyle, so there, you know, so this USDA loan, this USDA, USDA loan at two point two one five percent. Does not start until six months after the project completion. Up until then, really what we're gonna be doing this project with is interim financing, um, which is gonna go through this other bank. And that's gonna be at what, about four, five, six percent?
I would say at least four, maybe five.
So we're gonna be paying a higher percentage on actually doing it, but all of that interim financing interest is already built into the total amount that we're financing with USDA. Um, so it's, they're, they're gonna, they're kind of totally separate, they can't be really considered, it doesn't make sense to consider them together. Because this interest that we're gonna pay on the interim financing is already considered in our USDA loan.
That's correct. Yeah, well, breaking even is not a bad thing.
All right, Rebecca, we have a motion from Roberts and a second from Mullins, will we call the vote?
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Gurely.
Yes.
That is approved, um, the next step, that is, will be working with, um, city attorney. Working together with that, um, to write up the ordinance for the revenue bond, it is, it's a different type of ordinance. So, yeah, it's gonna have all of the different stipulations in there and, uh, that'll, that'll come back. I'm, I'd be optimistic to say it'll be here by the, by the twelfth, um, so if so, that would need to be read twice. So soonest that that could pass would be beginning of January. So even in the ordinance, you know, that the time that this would go into effect, um, would be a little bit after that, so maybe February, March.
So we should, for, March first?
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably wanna have our, our bridge financing ready, you know, probably ju, February, I mean, it, those things take so long to do.
All right, we can move on?
No, you guys finish out.
Thank you.
Hurry before we send their money.
We'll move on to new business, uh, we have ordinance number nine eighty. Uh, this is an ordinance levying general property taxes for the year twenty twenty four to help defray the costs of government for the city of Rocky Ford, Colorado, for the twenty twenty five budget year. And for the mill levy on each dollar's worth of property as per the assessed value thereon, as shown by the assessor of Otero County for the year twenty twenty four, as fixed by the Board of Equalization. On first reading and just to follow a comment on the, these are ordinances that are passed every year. To, is us, you know, setting our property tax. So this one will need to be read twice, so we would have, this is first reading and then we would have, um, second reading, December twelfth.
For the sake of time, Mr. Mayor, you can have one person motion to approve the three, but you do have to read the title of each.
Just what's, just what's on this agenda, right?
On the top portion of your ordinance.
This portion?
Yes.
Of all three?
Okay, I'm going for it, everybody.
I'll, I'll.
You gotta read the other ones.
Interject on that, I'm gonna interject on that one, um, so I would like to read separately. So we'll start on fifteen one, ordinance number nine eighty, you'll read it by title.
An ordinance, oh, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number nine eighty, an ordinance levying general property taxes for the year twenty twenty four. To help defray the costs of government for the city of Rocky Ford, Colorado, for the twenty twenty five budget year and for the mill levy on each dollar's worth of property. As per the assessed value therein, as shown by the assessor of Otero County for the year twenty twenty four, as fixed by the Board of Equalization on first reading.
I second it.
Call for vote?
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Mayor Gurely.
Yes.
All right, the next one, ordinance number nine eighty one. An ordinance summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the city of Rocky Ford, Colorado. For the calendar year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty five and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty five. Um, this would be on first reading, um, so this would be, uh, our first reading of adopting the twenty twenty five budget, which we just had the public hearing on.
Meaning that we won't change it anymore after what is currently there?
So if, if there were gonna be any changes that anyone would like to propose, this would be where that would, uh, be presented.
Do a supplemental budget.
Well, you can make changes between first and second reading.
So then we would be passing it as presented today, and then this ordinance is the one where we would be amending the budget in between. And then on the second reading, that would be the final twenty twenty five budget.
But we can change it after tonight for the, till the second reading.
On the final reading, you'd have to adopt whatever, you know, is there?
Whatever changes we want.
When you adopt our second reason, that's when it's in concrete.
So if we're looking to make a motion.
Look for that one, a motion on the title.
Except, I don't know.
Motion on the title.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number nine eighty one, budget adoption and ordinance summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the city of Rocky Ford, Colorado. For the calendar year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty five and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty five on first reading.
A second now. Second from Mullins, call for vote?
Mullins.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor Gurely.
Yes.
Right, and then ordinance number nine eighty two, an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds in the amount of and for the purpose as set forth in the ordinance. For the city of Rocky Ford, Colorado, for the year twenty twenty five budget year on first reading. And then this one, so the other one is general fund, this one is the other funds that we have.
All right, I motion that we approve ordinance number nine eighty two, appropriation of budget and ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds. In the amount of and for the purposes set forth in the ordinance for the city of Rocky Ford, Colorado, for the year twenty twenty five budget year.
I second it.
Call the vote?
Herrera.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Gurely.
Yes.
Those are good, um, first reading there. So we'll move on to new business fifteen point four, and that's selection of Catlin Canal proxy. Um, what that would be is us giving our proxy to who will have, um, placed the vote for Rocky Ford on our Catlin shares. We would select from any of the board of director members, current members on the Catlin are Alan France, Jared Gardner, Eric Henigan, Nathan Knapp and Scott Larson. Um, so out of those, we'd be looking for, uh, a motion on who to select as proxy. Um, just one note, two, two of the five, Alan France and Nathan Knapp are local to Rocky Ford.
Who's our current proxy?
It should be Alan France, I think.
I think, um, Ashram, I missed it, aren't those his?
No, he's from the Rock, or it's from. I think he's from the Rock, or he's right.
Is it the one that came with George Hanses?
I'll speak on Alan France, he's the one that came in with George Hanses, John, George Hanses is the secretary over at the Catlin. And Alan France, him and his family have been in Rocky Ford for a long time. I've been here six years and I know Alan France pretty good because of George Hanses, and he's the secretary over there, so.
He's also the school board member.
He's the one that, you know, George talked about the, uh, PISPA? The PISPA shares that we have?
Piska.
Piska? Those shares, so.
Um, does Alan have any plans of retiring off the board or anything anytime soon, do you know?
And with, I would, I guess on that side of it, I would say Nathan is probably newer out of, out of all of them.
But a multi-generational farmer, right?
Duane, if you have one other alternative, if one of you wants to go to the Catlin meeting, you can vote. Do you really wanna do that?
Do they have to redo it, so we can nominate them?
I don't know Catlin stuff.
I don't know water, my thoughts. I move to appoint Alan France as our, uh, Catlin Canal proxy. Yeah, I second.
Wait, 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 there's too many people talking.
I got you, we have a, we have a motion to appoint Alan France by, uh, Councilman Mullins, and we have a second from Councilman Martinez. Call the vote?
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Mayor Gurely.
Yes.
So we have selected Alan France as our Catlin Canal proxy. There's, uh, some paperwork here, so I'll get this filled out and we'll get this sent back over to them. Item number fifteen point five is a spending request from the Grand Theater. Um, it's for a projectionist training, so I'm gonna hand it over to Councilman Barone, if you wanna take the lead on that.
Now we're talking about the requesting for projection, it's okay, you want me to get it or no? Okay, now, Chris Sandoval is a pro, current projectionist for the theater. As J R said earlier, that the company Balco will not send any parts or anything for the projector because they found out he's not certified. So we'd like to get him certified, they would, the.
So they'll sell him parts, because they won't sell him parts if he's not certified.
And it's a lot cheaper for him to have the knowledge to do it himself than to have service people come in. But it's about three years old and it's never been serviced, nobody's ever come out to service it or anything. Once he's, uh, it's three days of online and then two days.
It's, it's, uh, what, two days online and three days?
And three days in four.
Three and four, sorry. In the classroom.
Teach him how to do all this, where he can maintain him, uh, keep him up, clean and service him. Once he becomes certified, we discussed it, where maybe he can train somebody else on it, that way if he's unavailable, he's on vacation or whatever, sick, he can't do it. Other people would, would be able to do it. The cost will be covered through the theater, it would be no cost to the city.
We're not asking you anything out of the general fund.
Yeah, it's just been three years, it's never been, been serviced, uh, they're, right now they're having a problem with the three D box. Can't be showing any three D and I don't know what the future holds for three D, but he would also learn to do that. So then if there's three D movies that are coming out in the future, you know, he'd be able to hopefully get this thing fixed and be able to do three D movies. And that's pretty much what I have for that. Is that correct? Do you have any?
The one piece of good news about the Grand Theater fund is that we're in the black this year, and it's not always been true.
Make the motion?
All right, make a motion to, 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 what is that?
Fifteen.
Grand, uh, five, uh, fifteen point, by Grand Theater requesting expenses for projectionist training.
I second it.
One, one comment I have and maybe somebody can save the day. Do we have an invoice, you know, has that been sent over?
I haven't seen it.
Robert, you.
Do you have an invoice for that?
Did they give you an invoice for that?
For the training?
Yeah, for this, this request.
Uh, no, they didn't.
So this, this one's a five thousand dollar request, so it puts us in that bracket of our purchasing policy to where we need an invoice. I know when this came over, we did send a request over to them on the twenty first, um, yeah, we haven't received anything.
So even if, even if the theater's paying for it with their funds, you still need to have.
We pay for it first.
What if your motion says contingent on submitting the invoice?
Do you wanna modify that?
Okay.
I would like to make a motion for fifteen dot five, Grand Theater requesting expenses for projectionist training.
Contingent on.
Pending, pending in, invoice, submission of invoice to the city.
I second that.
Call for vote?
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Mayor Gurely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it approved? Yeah, we can get that invoice and have that on record. Um, next item fifteen point six, City Council Community Engagement Fund. This is a proposal that I put together and sent it over to everyone. Can't remember when, I feel like maybe a week or so ago. Not sure if everyone's had enough time to read it, but kind of generally what this is, is it would be a community engagement, community development fund that would allow council to continue on in that community engagement. Just looking at where this would be funded from. I think originally we were looking at, you know, this being general funds, but in, in working with Calum Stacey, it looked like the Economic Development Fund that we did have, the Economic and Community Development Fund that currently is, the revenues for that are the idea place. And then that was also the fund that our former Economic Development Coordinator was working under. So this would essentially be funded through that and allow us to do community engagement events. Just, I think some quick examples could be the, the fireside chats, office of those, you know, town halls, block parties is another idea, you know, if someone wanted to, to fund a different picnic in the park, anything that's around community engagement. So kind of the policy's built out there for you're able to see that. I think one of the things that was said in there that the purchases would be by council. So that would be kind of, it would, it would require some, some work from us to put together a proposal on the project with expenses and be able to submit that to council for approval. There would be a allocation of a thousand per council member, fifteen hundred for the mayor, for a total of seventy five hundred for the year. So that's, wanted to kick it off there and then pass it over. If you have any feedback on that or any ideas. This would be something totally new that, that would be created through a, through a resolution.
Would the funds roll over to the following year if some of them wasn't used?
The, the way I wrote it is no, they, they would, they wouldn't.
I mean, you know, the city does need, personal opinion, the city does need more community involvement in the everyday city, you know, life living. And if we can use this to generate more involvement from the community, I mean, it's great, you know, just, we need to have participation from the public. This is your town, this is your city.
Yeah, and, and I got the same thought actually. When you sent this over, I probably heard me thinking out loud about it a bit and you know, it's, it's a little bit like school teachers. We can try to put together community events, but it's out of pocket for us. So that's not really fair, not only for us, but just anybody who wants to be a council member, from the public, asking them to, to rock a lot of the cost and do that and not receive anything makes it impossible for people who otherwise might be good council members. So I think this is something that sets up council members in the future for, for success. So I'm for it.
You know, you, it, it mentions setting up like, like mini grants, micro grants for things. First thing that comes to my mind is we, on, on the tree board, we got the flower pots and we're looking at probably getting more this year. But we need, we need help watering. Would there be, would this fund allow us to, to make a grant to give a four H kid, a high school kid, somebody, you know, two days a week to water these, maybe fifty bucks a week or something? Or putting the money to repair some of the water lines that are, I know, I know it doesn't cover all of where the boxes are, but there is water lines that at one point in time worked. Would this be a fund that could do that or would that be something else?
You know, I, I, I think so. One, one thing that I hear on that is like, it wouldn't really allow for any funding to go directly to an individual. If it was an organization or a business, you know, it could. So maybe if it was going to the four H or the F F A, but as far as an individual and just kind of, I think protects us from protects us from, you know, any, any block of, of patriotism or misuse there. But, yeah, like if an organization wanted to step up, then that could definitely be something.